Hey.
Hey, how's it going?
I am well. You doing good?
I'm doing, doing great. Got a long weekend, feeling good about our topic today. It's exciting.
What is our topic today?
I thought we would respond to a Christianity Today article called, Don't Run For The School Board. And I think that's really an important thing to talk about because a lot of people have been running for the school board in Florida and Texas. You're seeing massive changes in the school board structures and Christianity Today does not think this is the proper approach. And so I think it's worth, worth questioning, is it the proper approach or are Christians getting too caught up in the political winds right now? And do we risk hurting our credibility or something along those lines?
I like it. I'll approve. You want to talk about it?
Let's do it. Should, should we pray?
Let's pray.
All right. Join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
All right. So let's, let's begin with the first question. Why did you even find this article? How did you find at the very beginning? So?
I think, I, I think someone tweeted and said, this is a strange article. It might've been Tom Askel, somebody on Twitter said kind of a strange title. And, and we've done this before where we have to remind the audience, a lot of times you'll write an article and the editor will choose a title that's a little bit of an eye catching title. So the author of this article may, may not have chosen this title. Don't Run For The School Board. She may have, but we don't want to kind of judge an article by the, the title. Because a lot of times that is designed to get you kind of provoked to read it. And so that being said, the article says much of what that title is. I would say that this title is not a inaccurate description. Maybe it goes further than the article. But any other questions?
That's, I was just wondering, you know, because this article is, it's a few weeks old now too. So, but I think it's, it is an interesting premise to kind of go through and to kind of walk through. So give me, okay. Cause you were the one who discovered it and talked about it. So like, okay, what's the gist of it besides the title? Why are they, because here's the deal, we, we know where Christianity Today lies and there is a piece of that. It does appear that, you know, there, you can kind of think, okay, I can get where they're coming from. Because I know kind of where they are at this stage of the game, especially since like 2016, you've been seeing that, that direction. But what's the just, is it a strong like biblical case for, we don't need to be involved in the school boards? Or what's the flavor of the article if you, as you read it?
Yeah. So generally the, the author here, name is Bonnie Christian. She is arguing maybe that Christians are getting too caught up in the culture wars. Even going back in the nineties and you know, the, she doesn't mention the moral majority, but that's kind of who I was thinking she was referencing. And the idea that, that we need to be cultural warriors in order to try to, you know, maintain Christians' place in the public square. And she, she kind of looks to some C.S. Lewis quotes that, that talks about that. You, you can't really pass on what you don't have. And so if you find yourself in a non-Christian society, you're not going to bequeath the Christian society to it by trying to replace an education minister or such. So she's arguing really it's an ineffective strategy. And then opts for a better strategy on the school question is parental discipleship, that parents take ownership of discipling their children. And that might involve homeschooling and might involve a, going to public school and then creating an intentional plan. And so there's not one size fits deal, but she's trying to pull Christians out of this culture war mindset and and again, I, you know, I might've been more in agreement with this a couple of decades ago. In my current state of mind and just seeing where the world's going, I, I say, oh, how quaint. That's a nice idea. How has that worked out for us? You know, because it's not like we don't have 20 years of stats showing us that Christianity is not, not just losing its own influence in the public sector, it is losing its own children. And so this is what I was assuming Christians were doing all along, discipling their kids. So is, is there a reason that that's not as effective as it once was is a question I would kind of want to pursue?
Well, but here's something, I guess, I guess I want to push back on this article already, like, so I'm reading this section here and it says this, it says, the real problem then is outside the scope of the culture war, which despite its spiritual mask amounts to a variant of power politics. So look, if I'll say this too. If you're a Christian and you want to be involved because you just want to be political. Look, if that's God's calling in your life is to be a Christian politician and you're going to start somewhere. Okay, that's one thing. But you know, I, I, I think you have to kind of differentiate between why parents are wanting to be in on this. But then it goes on to say, the real problem is now how we have come to be. For Christian parents worried about a children's education, the real, most realistic remedy is discipleship. And this is the part where I think is, once again, this is the weak offering. What it means in practice will vary by family. For some it'll entail choosing a different school. A different school maybe in one that doesn't have as many crazies running the show, right? Because they had normal people in theirs. Perhaps a Christian school, charter school or homeschooling, rather than waging an embittered, embittered political fights. If you have the time, wherewithal and resources to run for school board, you're probably also capable of taking on the costs and inconveniences of other schooling options. For others, public education will be a missional choice or simply the only feasible one. What I find problematic about that though, is that's not discipleship in any of those options, right? Like that's the, like, that is the approach. If your approach is disciple your kids, like, so send them to a Christian school. That's not, that's not a good way to think. Now granted, I think they clear that up a little bit when they say, discipling children towards a mature Christian faith goes well beyond our decisions about education. This isn't something we can leave to chance or politics. It has to be deliberate. You can't do anything by voting or campaigning or bickering on Twitter, but still, right? Like, there are many who say, yes, I've done my discipleship. I send them to the Christian school. I've sent them to the place that's not crazy woke or whatnot. Like that's not going to disciple your kids either. So discipling your kids needs to be something very strong and very real and very intentional in your home and it's a plan for you. And I mean, so the, and I know, I want you to share some of the stats in just a second. But, and I'll leave one more thing and then I'll, I'll back, throw it back at you. It goes on to this, I agree with this statement. In our context, attention to each, attention to tech use must be unusually a big part of discipleship. You can review your child's curriculum, library books. You can't review the hundreds of video clips they watch in a single unsupervised hour on TikTok. And I agree on that is that that's something that 100%, like if you've got your kids on tablets and phones. We, we were just dealing with, we had a, a ministry come out called Streetlight USA. They do, they deal with ministry towards trafficking victims. And that we're just talking about how that has become like one of the gateways into all of this is through the phone, through the tablet of people, they meet online, things like that. So like, yeah, like you gotta, you gotta, your discipleship strategy needs to be, you, you, you know, get rid of all that stuff and you really have strong policy, but you can't just be punted to the other group. It has to be intentional of raising as for me in my house, right? This is what it's got to be. So, you know, so that, I want to argue that for just a second. Discipleship has to be happening for sure, but I don't think. And I, but I want you to speak out of the stats on this, but I also think that doesn't mean, just because I'm discipling my family, doesn't mean I shouldn't be concerned about where they are or what's happening in my neighborhood school. So I'll throw it back to you.
Yeah, I, I think um, part of the problem I have with this is it assumes that we can't do two things at once. That we can't be actively discipling our kids and take, take an active role in trying to steer the direction of our education systems. Which I think what we've seen is that Christians in general have taken a pretty passive role over the last, really a couple of generations in their civic duty to, to be active in these things. And so we've handed things off to the experts and we, we're always shocked when we find out that the experts have been indoctrinated for bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, doctorate degrees in, in a system that is not just secular, but often anti-Christian. And where we are today is, and I, and I think some people too, depending on where you're located, maybe you live in an area that the, the, the politics haven't hit your school as hard as in other areas. But when, when your, your schools are actively promoting transgenderism among elementary school kids and your schools are actively promoting LGBTQIA plus and experimentation through sexual education and those types of things, you recognize that there's something much, much more wrong here than your kids being presented with worldviews that are contrary to Christian claims. What we're seeing now are your, your kids are not just being presented with options, they're being encouraged to engage in things that the Bible says are sinful. And so we're sending children into the lion's den and hoping that the, the limited time we have as parents with them outside of school will be enough to offset the amount of time that they, they've been thrown to the wolves. And I think that the parents do have a significant role to play. But we also see that when kids get into that adolescent stage and they're generally trying to test boundaries and trying to figure out who they are, that these schools become even more destructive because they give kids an opportunity to rebel and encourage them to rebel. And then they create a wedge between mom and dad as, oh, you old fuddy duddies, you're just not with the times. And if education wasn't so significant, then why is there such a battle over education? Where I think the, the left politically has seen education as a very significant tool. The right has seen education much more as you're teaching our kids basic skills that they'll need to succeed in life. And what we're seeing now is that we're not teaching the basic skills. We're teaching, instead of the basic skills, really social engineering ideas that, that are contrary to scripture, anti-Christian, and the results are, are pretty damning. So, so this is something that I think that we just really have to recognize that what, what, what she's saying in the article is that we can't bequeath Christian culture to a culture that's not Christian by just taking over the institution. And I would say you're correct, but Christianity did take over cultures that it, it, at one point in time, it was the minority and it took control. And so how does that happen? It does happen by us being able to successfully raise a next generation. And then win people with the gospel who successfully raise the next generation. What has happened in America is we're losing more of our kids than we're keeping. And how is that happening? I, I bet you a lot of it is the education system. In fact, I think it's the primary area that we're losing ground. And so I think this is one of the things that we really do need to be engaged in. We, for the sake of the lost kids too, because the Christian kids might send their kids to Christian school or homeschool their kids. The, the general public is sending them to public school and the kids are coming out with lifestyle choices that are antithetical to Christianity and to salvation. And they're coming out with addictions to things that will make it even harder ground for the gospel to penetrate. And so there's reasons for us to take control because that public sphere should be a place that is as neutral as we can get it and as pro-Christian as we can, so that we can reach the lost children. So, so there's just so much here that is really a mess. And it's just assuming again, it, it comes from that kind of wimpy, I would, I would just say, it feels wimpy to me. We don't want to fight any battles. We, we, we don't want anyone to, you know, think that there's any conflict and we, we just want to somehow say that all Democrats and Republicans are equal and, and the political sphere is something we shouldn't be engaged in. And I, I just struggle. Have you not read your Bible? Because especially the Old Testament, my goodness, we, we have a very active connection between politics and the successful perpetuation of the gospel from the king writing down the law and then teaching that. And, and so the New Testament, yeah, we don't have a theocracy. But we ought to be working very diligently to put as many Bible believing on fire Christians in roles of leadership so that we can not only create a Christian nation here, but become a great missionary operation again, so that we can reach the, the world, you know, for, for me, that's still the plan. It's not to manage decline of Christianity in the West as long as we can. And that's what I feel like this article is presenting. Just.
Yeah. If, if, I mean, look, I, I understand that if they were saying that, you know, look, if, if Christians are only caring about their schools because of, they want to be political and they want to support whatever political agenda, I think we should be caring about our schools for more than that. Like it, it should be something that we care about because we do believe that we should have Christians there, that we should have Christians in places of positions that are, that are in the know, that are looking into things that the more that we can put in those areas, the better. Right? That we, 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 we become part of that culture and that fabric for those schools. So look, like if, if, if all this is, and I think this is, this is against kind of like the, it's this straw man of like, this is, we just have these radical, like, you know, MAGA hat, wherein people, and they really don't care about their kids' education. They just want to ride that wave. Right? Like, like, I don't think that's what we're looking at though. I think like, there's a legit thing that's going on that people want to know. I don't think they're just doing it because they, they, they just wear a hat, right? Or that they, they align with some political ideology. I think people are concerned saying, I, I don't know what my kids are learning anymore. I look at the Facebook profiles of some of these teachers and I think, oh my goodness, right? And so, but, but I do think that, you know, you can be all those things and, 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 you know, and, and have that still, that political persuasion. And yet still look at your school and say, there's a part of me that wants to do it for that, but I need to be there for the sake of the gospel first and foremost, that I need to be, I need to play a role in this. I can't just sit back. The truth be told, I think churches, local churches should do more than just be concerned about that. Local churches need to be thinking about like, how can I get more of my volunteers to come and just help? You know, just to be a service to this local school, because then there's more of us available to get to know for it's a mission field in that way, right? I think that those are, I think there's a lot more going on there that Christians should be concerned about their school. And I think you've got to have some of those political people who know how to do, to, to get in there and know what to look for and how to lead on that. But you should also flood it with people who just want to be an influence and just be a good influence in the school. And so I think, look, yeah. So I think that, 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 that's what they're looking at kind of somebody else who I think might exist. But for Christians, if you're concerned about that because of your faith and because you want to see, you know, like you've said neutrality, then that, that's a whole different thing that we're talking about. We're not even talking about the same kind of people that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, again, when, when a Burgerfeld came down and legalized gay marriage across the country, it, it was not the majority that bequeathed that to America. It was the Supreme Court. When Roe v. Wade came down, it was not the majority of America that was pro-abortion. It was decreed from one of these institutions. And what we're seeing is this idea that C.S. Lewis said that, you know, the government can't do these things. It doesn't have a capacity to do it. Is we're finding out the government has the capacity to do an awful lot. And so what, what's happened in just the last seven years since Obergefell is that the country has moved radically in, in a direction that, that they didn't have the momentum or the victories to do. But that court decision created an opportunity that changed everything. It's changed culture. And so the idea to say that we can't change culture, so we should just focus on discipling our kids at home is, is really a losing strategy. You know, she comes back like the cultural war instinct is to respond to the passage with a new battle plan. So school boards aren't enough. We need to control the school administrations too. Then we can put a Christian teacher and a Christian curriculum in every public classroom in America. Then finally we'll turn this thing around. And she says, you know, that, that basically is impossible. It's constitutionally dubious, blah, blah, blah. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I would say absolutely. Let's do all those things and disciple our kids. You know, so, so I mean, my, my thought is, yeah. And constitutionally impermissible, perhaps, perhaps, but there was a time when prayer was in school and the majority of people were teaching from a Christian perspectives and Christian pageants happen and Christmas pageants happen in all the schools in the land. So we, we did have these things and it wasn't constitutionally impermissible. So the reality in my mind is, yeah, we, we need to fight every battle on every hill in the love of Christ for the future of this country, for the future of this world, because Christ said that of this government, there will be no decrease. It's going to increase. It's going to ever increase. And so while I don't know what things will look like in the next 10 to 15 years, I, I know that I'm called to, yeah, be primarily the discipler of my own family, you know, fathers teach these things to your kids, write them in the, on the forehead, on the hands, the gates, you know, but we're going to be pushing out to the gates. We're going to be pushing this thing out as far as we can get it. And I'm, I'm okay with the constitutional amendment to make it Christian. I mean, at the end of the day, yeah, that might shock people. How dare you? But the reality is that the, the framers, most of the time when they're talking about religions, they're talking about denominations. They were really operating in a mostly Christian climate. And so they're, why stop there? Yeah, let's go as far as we can and let's, again, but don't, don't do these things to the exclusion of discipling your kids. I think that if that's what she's saying, then I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But disciple your kids, do these things. And I do have some of those stats if you want to.
Read them out because, but, but yeah, I think as a part of that article, it just seems like it's like, you should disciple your kids. Don't worry about anything else. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's great. We should be discipling our kids and we shouldn't retreat either, right? That, why can't it be both? You know?
Yeah. And I think a lot of it's because there's this, this, this strand of Christianity that, that just wants to be a friend to everybody and assume that, that, that we can all just go along and get along. And the other side doesn't think that. The other side is aggressively active in trying to do everything they can from every institutional perspective to force this agenda down. And so if Christians just kind of say, okay, well, we'll just continue to retreat from every avenue that we have influence in and just zero in on our homes, it'll all get better. Statistics prove that's not true. You know, I actually asked the question in a message recently, would you rather your kid go to heaven or to Harvard? And the, the question was kind of to get people's attention, but the reality is if your kids go to Harvard, chances are they won't go to heaven. They could, but it's unlikely.
That's a catchy, we should call that this podcast. If you're going to Harvard, you're not going to heaven. Sorry, keep going.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't choose the title, right? Yeah. But the idea is that we're losing, Christian families are losing between 60 and 80% of their kids when they go to college. So, and we've seen this in the, depending on your area, it might be greater or worse. But if you've worked with high school students, you know that when they go to college, there's a good chance they are going to be gone from the church for a few years, if not forever. It used to be that they would go, they'd get married, they'd come back when they had kids. Now they're not coming back. And so 60 to 80% of our kids are lost. This is kids in public school. Now, if they're in private school, it's harder to get these statistics, but there's Christian private schools that are claiming that they have about a 60% retention rate. So it flips the script from losing two thirds of your kids to losing one third of your kids if they go to a Christian school. And then if they are homeschooled, the best statistics there are available, homeschool, from homeschool groups. There's some bias here. 90% of homeschool kids retain their faith post-high school. So if you want to save your kids and keep them in, in the church and in heaven, homeschool, that, that's, that's what I would say. Because you're going to be the primary influence, which is the biblical model. Mom and dad are supposed to be the primary influence. When we send them off all the time, we cease to be the primary influence. And so homeschooling is still the best. If you can't homeschool, it's better if you find some good, solid Christian teachers at a Christian school who will reinforce what you're doing at home, discipling your kids. But if you're just sitting in the public, yeah.
You can't do that. Find a good public school where there are good people that are involved in the dang board and in the life of the school and just.
And are choosing to get curriculum, not from like the two publishers in the country, but trying to figure out, how do we get curriculum that's not completely on board with the LGBTQIA plus agenda? How do we get curriculum that's not completely woke? How do we get curriculum that's just the old fashioned, hey, we're going to be competing with China and India. Our kids need to know how to do math. Maybe we'll spend some time doing math rather than talk about how math is racist, you know? Finding some good places like that would be more helpful. You know, this is the I probably violated a policy on YouTube. This might get banned.
I don't know.
But one of the things, it's an old statistic that, that I wanted to bring up that, that offers hope is that when looking at the importance of dads in the homes, we had some different statistics that came through Lifeway and came through, I watched the, the men's group years back, the Promise Keepers. And what they found is that if the, the, the men were going to church with their kids, the retention rates were much higher. Out of those stats, what we've also found is that if mom and dad regularly attend church, there's about a 60, 50 to 66% chance of retention that their kids will stay in church. That's even for the kids going to public school. So if you're sending your kids to public school, you can have the same results as the private school, just by going to church every week, mom and dad.
Yeah.
And I would say that falls, that's the discipleship model. Now, the other stats that came out of this is if you stayed for Bible study each week, it increased it to 72%. So almost three quarters of your kids are going to remain faithful post-high school. If mom and dad go to church and remain for Bible study. Now, I think that's because these, the parents that are doing this are also the parents that are discipling their kids. So there, there's a high probability. I'm still upset that we're losing a quarter of our kids, even if we do that. That's unacceptable to me.
Devastating.
So my thought is, well, what does it do if I homeschool and I go to church regularly? I, I probably have a just tremendous chance that my kids will retain the faith. And if I homeschool or if I send my kids to private school and I, I do all these things, the statistics get better. So this is where I think her article fails is we've done it just by discipling our kids and we're losing ground because parents in general are sending their kids off to other experts who don't believe in Jesus, who don't promote Christianity, who are actively teaching them to reject the faith of their fathers. And we have been losing ground for a long time. So I would say, let's, let's make the board favor us. Let's make everything support Christianity throughout the entire environment. And that way, when I'm discipling my kids and I send them to Johnny's house, I know that they're going to learn Christianity at Johnny's house because they go to church. And when they go to school, I know that Mrs. Bell is going to be teaching them Christian values because she's a member of our church at the public school. And I made sure that my kid was in her fourth grade class. You know, there, there's things that we can do, but parents need to be way more active. And again, the lady didn't pick the title. If we're not engaged in the culture war, it's just a slow surrender. And, and I, I'm tired of surrendering. You know, I've watched it my whole life and half my life is probably over. I, I'd like to get a little bit more active now in the second half.
You bring up an interesting point though, which is that, you know, I think you said it before we went on, right? Those stats reveal, right, that most people aren't actually active in their church either, right? Like, isn't that? Isn't that part of what that reveals is if that's the truth, then we're seeing a lot of people who claim to be Christian whose kids aren't really active in church because mom and dad aren't active in church. So we have this like, it's like the tsunami of people who quote unquote are Christian, who don't actively care about the discipleship of their kids, who let their kids kind of do whatever they trust that the school is going to be. And then church is like a, you know, we'll do that periodically and what, you know, this is what we do, right? Like that is a recipe for all failure. And, and so, you know, I think that that's, that's a sad thing about it too. But I think that is hope, right? That if you are diligent and you do play a role, you know, I think every Christian, if you've got your kids in a public school, then mom and dad, we should try to be involved with it. Find time to be involved with it. That, that, you know, even just from a missional perspective. Right? Like you need to find a space where you are regularly amongst lost people. That is a great place, you know, to start, whether you can volunteer or whether you get on the school board, like to just begin to be around people who are not just church people and to be a source of, of good in your community. You don't want to be a jerk, right? People might view you as that, you know, but there is something to be said. I mean, I start to think about, you know, like if you look at what Paul says in First Thessalonians, he says, "We encourage you brothers and sisters to do this even more, to seek to lead a quiet life, to mind your own business, to work with your own hands as we commanded you, so that you may proper, you may behave properly in the presence of outsiders, not be dependent on anybody." Right? So that's, look, so some might say, well, see, that's exactly what the article is advocating, right? That we're going to be quiet, we're going to live out, but that's not what we're, we're talking about. We're not just talking about mind your own business. Don't think about these things. Like, no, you need to think about these things and you need to be a source in the community. You need to be a place. You need to be, but you don't want to be, I will say this, you don't want to let your politics be the reason why somebody will not, you know, dialogue with you, right? Like, like you don't, you don't want that to be the issue necessarily. It was, I think it needs to be come down to like, like the way I hold myself as a believer, as I'm around people, like people are just not going to like, if, if they're not going to like me, I want it to be because they don't like what I stand for. Not necessarily that I support certain parties or platforms or my personality. I'm a firebrand or whatnot. You know what I mean? So I think there's a place for that as well. Anyways, those are just interesting things to kind of think through. But I think be involved, I'll say this last thing and then I'll be done with this conversation. We had a, you know, Dennis Peathers who comes with Rooftop Ministries and he was sharing about a place he was out, I think he was out in Kenya. And talking about how that the, right now, the city is split like 50 Christian, 50% Christian, 50% Muslim. And they said, the pastors was lamenting, saying, we think it's about to go even bigger Muslim. And part of that is, is because the strategy that the Muslims have for the city, right? Which includes buying up. He said, they took them on a tour and they said, these are properties, these are old colonial buildings that the Muslims had bought and now they're making them mosques. Muslims have a plan for putting everybody in certain positions of government because they want to have an influence of how things are run. And then also of how things are run. And then also, people begin to look and say, this is a, so largely Muslim area, right? So granted, that's Islam, and that functions, it's very much, uh, functions a lot differently. But I do think that there's something to be said about, do Christians have a strategy? Not a political one, but do we have a missional gospel strategy for our community? And I think it includes running for school board. So there you go.
And, and go to the, the founders, the pilgrims, go, go back. They had a political and a missional strategy. The two, the two go together often, and I think the, the, the American story has made Christians, I think, afraid to be in the political sphere. And as Baptists, we're always a little concerned that, that we, we tighten it so much that we get persecuted again. So we, we haven't advocated a theocracy in, in the Baptist heritage. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be running for office. The, the reality is, I, I think Christians want to live a quiet life and raise their family. The other side doesn't. And I think, again, we talked about this a long time ago, um, several videos ago, that, that there's, there's a diabolical force that's organizing the powers, the principalities, and they're active about trying to stop the advancement of the kingdom of God. And if Christians don't recognize that we're called to a wartime faith uh, against the, the dominion of Satan, and that the gates of hell will not stand against the church, i- if, if we just retreat from that call, um, yeah, we're, we're gonna see the advancement, uh, against us in a very organized and, and, uh, powerful way, which is what we're seeing. Um, and what's amazing is that if Christians get on mission and do it God's way, you see all that deteriorate. Because what'll happen is the Muslims that get into power will become Christians, and there'll be conversions, and it will undo that whole careful planning of the devil through people betting me before Christ, who is king. But Christianity is political. We have a king. It's Christ. We have a judge. It's Christ. And, um, if we are called to redeem people, we gotta recall, redeem the institutions of men as well. So, um, so anyway, I, I get excited about it. One of the things also, looking at this, it's really important that I, I've noticed some Christians, when you get your kids at adolescence in high school, they're, they're wanting to give their, their teens some permission not to go to church if they don't feel like it. And I would say, uh, it's okay for you to let your teens experiment on some things as they're growing into adulthood. But going to church is such a vital discipline of the faith that you can't negotiate that one. Take your teens to church, because if they develop the habits in adolescence, those habits will hold for life. And so force the habits for adulthood into adolescence. If they wanna sleep in, don't let them, wake them up. Make them get up at a certain hour, make them go to bed at a certain hour, because you're gonna, you're gonna imprint your teens for life with good skills and good habits. But one of the most important ones that you could do is get them to church. So that should be non-negotiable. And, um, let them maybe miss something else, you know? But don't just let them do what they want, because you're gonna build in laziness in the Christian walk. So, um, cause I, that's where I've noticed faithful parents, a lot of times when those teens get to high school, they just are like, well, we don't wanna force them. It's like, force them, force them now.
Yeah, I think you see what happens to those. The reality is, I know you have people that have questions like, they're very stubborn, what do I do? There's a rebellion piece, and I just don't know what to do. But reality is, the ones who allow their kids to just choose, you see what happens when they've chosen, and they're not gonna choose to be involved. And it, and, and that's just the case, you know, is once that you've offered that choice, and you're not saying this is who we are as a family, this is for me and my house. Um, when that just becomes you pick and choose, this is important for us, but you do your own thing. That's not like, like, there should be a level of, is you're in our house, this is who we are. And that's part of, that's an identity piece. That's not unlike the conversation we had just a couple of weeks ago with the cross-politic, one that we did is, you know, there is a sense of, we're not telling you, you, you're, we're telling you, we're not telling you, choose what you wanna do. We're telling you who you are, uh, and this is the understanding, right?
Yeah.
So.
And there's tremendous leverage. If you got adult children living at home, this is what we do on Sunday, or don't live in my home, you know, like, use, use your reasonable s- sphere of influence, you know? I, I always kinda like, well, you know, how do we make them go? Well, you, you, you feed them, don't you? Stop feeding them, you know? You have a lot of leverage as a parent, and a lot of parents are afraid to use that leverage, because they're afraid their kids won't be their best friend. Um, you wanna be a best friend with your kid, raise them right. And when they are actually mature, they'll love and respect what you've done. When you try to make friends with a teenager, those are the kids that you won't have much friendships with, because they'll make a shipwreck of their life and they'll blame you. So, um, anyway, yeah, we're probably up for time, huh?
We're at time, man. We're at time. All right, you ready?
I'm ready.
Let's close it out. All right, may the Lord bless you and protect you. May the Lord make his face shine on you and be gracious to you. May the Lord look with favor on you and give you peace. All right, thank you. And, uh, hey, we'll talk to you guys later. Hey, if you run for a school board and you're in there, let us know. I think it's interesting to see how things are going and, and maybe what kind of influence you do have. I, I'd love to hear more about the, what a Christian can do if they're involved in life of the church. So if you've got that, you're listening, I wanna hear more for sure. All right. Later, man.
All right.
Bye-bye.